Now come to order, please stand for the president's leisure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, honorable city council members, to our city attorney, chief of staff, deputy clerk, to the administrative staff that's here in the audience, and to all of you that are attending tonight's meeting, and for those who are viewing tonight's meeting via our broadcast channel on YouTube Live, welcome to the City of Romulus City Council regular meeting. Today's date is Monday, September 8th, 2025. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so under the public comment portion of the agenda. You can fill out a request to speak public comment card, which is located on the table in the back, and then handed to the deputy clerk, otherwise you'll just raise your hand and be acknowledged by our chairperson. And at this time, we will have roll call, councilwoman Abdo.
Here.
Councilman Burden.
Here.
Councilman Kraut.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here.
Councilman Wadsworth.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Tonight's regular council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda, two minutes, three petitioner, four, chairperson's report, five mayor's report, six clerks' report, seven treasurers' report, eight public comment, nine unfinished business, ten new business, eleven more, and twelve is communication, and number thirteen is adjournment and emotional being ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
I move support.
The motion by Mr. Kraut, supported by Mr. Jones, for approval of the agenda as presented. Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council. Number two are the minutes for approval, are the minutes from the regular council meeting held on Monday, August 25th, 2025, at 7:30 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move, I'm going to approve the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on Monday, August 25th, at 7:30.
Support.
The motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Mr. Jones, for approval of our minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, August 25th, at 7:30. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you. Agenda item 2B, request approval of the minutes from the special meeting public hearing held on Monday, August 25th, 2025, at 6:45 PM. This was to hear comments or objections to a request to vacate Cypress Road in the Metroplex Industrial Park subdivision, number one.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we approve the minutes from a special meeting in the public hearing that was held on Monday, August 25th, at 6:45, and it was in regards to the vacant of Cypress Road.
Court.
The motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Mr. Kraut, for approval of the minutes from our special meeting public hearing held on Monday, August 25th, at 6:45, and this was to hear comments or objections to a request to vacate Cypress Road in the Metroplex Industrial Park subdivision one. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council. Number three is petitioner, and tonight we do have a petitioner on the agenda, the Trackside Hideaway LLC, and the petitioners are James and Maria Bullock. You can come up to the podium. Also, my office has submitted a recommendation to council, which is in part of your packet. Also, I want to note that this application has been forwarded through and have gone through all the appropriate departments for approval, and we followed all of the, you know, protocols as required in our city ordinance and state statutes there. So, here, again, we're asking, the petition is to ask for approval for a liquor license, the Trackside Hideaway, and I guess we'll let the petitioners have a floor.
Thank you. Good evening. We're currently running an event space in downtown. We're just trying to change from an event space into a bar. We feel like that would fit better into downtown. Another event space currently just opened up, it's about a mile down the road from us, so we're going to end up competing with them anyways. We feel like a bar is a better fit for us, and I think it's a better fit for downtown as well, connecting the rest of the social district down there with the artisans and kind of the feel of the downtown area. So we're just looking to add that. We're going to plan on using it for live music, as well as showing all the large sporting events and everything else that's going on. Any questions for us?
Any question from council?
John?
Mr. Wadsworth?
Jim, where did the liquor license come from? Are you transferring from someplace else?
No.
Or is it a brand-new one?
It's all brand-new.
Brand-new?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Thanks, Jim.
I've got a couple of questions.
Ms. Roscoe?
So, I see your timeframe on here. Are you going to be open all those hours all the time, or are you just going to be kind of renting your venue out for special occasions? Kind of explain that.
You have a plan on switching to the hours that are listed on the paperwork? So we have the normal business, the normal bar business hours, but we're looking at like around 4:00 PM until midnight on the Monday, Sunday through Thursday, and then Friday and Saturday we open from noon until noon.
So you're planning on being open every day?
The normal bar hours, every day.
And then I see they say that you're, and I know tonight we're just voting on the liquor license, but everyone has questions about this because we've already got two places right in that strip less than a quarter mile, and then around the corner, I'm not real good with the mileage, but you know, then you've got Walters right around the corner too. So, I mean, I don't, I hate to see all that competition with the same kind of venue. But the other question I have for you, it says that you have parking for 17 cars, but you're allowed 75 people inside.
Yep, and that's what this building parking, the public parking along the roads, that's what was approved to.
So you have 17 spots alongside your building?
Yeah, 17 parking spots.
And then you're counting on everything else up and down, down the street, sort of thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And like I said, I know tonight we're, all the recommendations have been made to, for your liquor license, that's kind of cut and dry tonight, as far as that goes, but I know there's people that do have concerns about opening another venue, just like the ones we have, kind of like the ones we have.
Yes.
Not totally.
Yes.
But anyways, that's all the questions I had, John.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe. Any other?
To the chair?
Yes, Ms.
Is this going to be where Spartan Security was?
No, it's next door.
Okay.
It's a building in the right to the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
John?
Yes.
I've got one question, Ted Attorney. I thought they took liquor license away from us to be approved, it was all in the state.
If you were denying, all you're doing is recommending to the state.
Oh, we're not approving or denying, we're just recommending it.
Yeah, your ordinance is either approved or denied. If you deny it, all it is, is you can write to the state saying that the council is not recommending it.
Okay, fine, all right. I understand, thank you.
Any other discussion?
One more.
Yes.
But on the other hand, then, I understand they've met all the criteria to be able to submit for this license, am I correct?
Yeah, local criteria, yes.
Yes.
I don't know whether you met all the criteria with the state.
Okay, but as far as the city goes, they've met all those criterias to be able to submit it to the state?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, discussion, council?
Are we looking to take action now?
Yeah.
If I may, through the chair, the recommendation is to, we're asking council to concur with the recommendation of the city's administrative departments and adopt a resolution recommending the Trackside Hideaway LLC located at 36724 Goddard Road here in Romulus, 48174. The application for a new Class C license be considered for approval by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission pursuant to MCL 436.1501 and Public Act 58 of 1998.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wadsworth?
I'm going to move that we approve the sidetrack Hideaway LLC and James and Maria Bullock petitioner for local approval for the MLCC to issue a Class C liquor license.
Court.
The motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Mr. Kraut, for Trackside Hideaway LLC, James and Maria Bullock, local approval for MLCC to issue a Class C liquor license. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There was no special meeting for council tonight. Therefore, I'm going to yield, recognize, Councilwoman Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask for support of a motion for a city, City of Romulus resolution for, to honor District Elder Nathaniel Neil Fisher and First Lady Margaret Fisher on the occasion of their 23rd pastoral anniversary and birthday celebration.
Court.
And with that being said, I'll hit some of the highlights here that are on the resolution honoring them tonight. The Roma City Council elected officials proudly recognize individuals who demonstrate unwavering dedication, leadership, and compassion in serving the spiritual and physical needs of our community. And District Elder Nathaniel Fisher and First Lady Margaret Fisher have faithfully led Shiloh Deliverance Church, founded on April 18th, 2002, answering a divine call to teach, uplift souls, restore hope, and shine light in to some of our city's most challenging neighborhoods. And through 23 years of devoted pastoral service, Pastor Fisher has stood as a beacon of strength, visiting hospitals to pray for the sick, organizing closing and outreach drives, and opening the church door for community cookouts that have nourished 200 to 300 people in need. Under their steadfast guidance, the church family moved into its permanent home at 30055 Ecorse Road on August 13th, 2006, establishing a sanctuary not only of worship, but also of healing, deliverance, and community support. Pastor Fisher's ministry is guided by Psalms 127:1, "Except the Lord build a house, they labor in vain; that build it, except the Lord keep the city, the watchman waketh but in vain." This verse has been the foundation of his life's work and the church's growth. This joyous celebration also marks the birthdate of Pastor Nathan Fisher on September 10th, a fitting moment to honor his life, legacy, and relentlessness service to both God and the city of Romulus. Therefore, be it resolved that the honorable elected officials of the city of Romulus, on behalf of our grateful community, do hereby extend heartfelt congratulations and deepest appreciation to District Elder Nathaniel Fisher and First Lady Margaret Fisher for 23 years of outstanding pastoral leadership. Can I get support?
Court.
Any other comments? No other comments, roll call vote for the resolution. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Mr. Wadsworth?
If I could, I'd like to recognize George Simko for 55 years of service in our town. You know, we have, sometimes things do fall through the crack. George started in the city back in 1970, I believe he was in Animal Control. He worked his way all the way up to a supervisor in the DPW, and during that time, he was a, was one of the original volunteers of the Romulus Fire Department, where he worked his way up, and you can check my facts before we write this out, he worked his way up to, I believe it was the rank of captain in the fire department, and George gave a lot, many years of this town, you know, working all different shifts, getting up in the middle of night to respond to fires, and I think we should give him a resolution of appreciation for a total of 55 years.
Support.
There's been motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for resolution. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved. At this time, the chair also going to recognize Councilwoman Tally.
Yes, it's my honor to read two memorial resolution. The first one is honoring Carl Eugene Morris, and as Councilwoman Roscoe said, I want to touch on some of the highlights of the resolution, where as Carl Eugene Morris, born September 30th, 1944, devoted his life to faith, family, service, and community until he entered eternal rest on August 25th, 2025, whereas Carl Eugene Morris served his country with honor through two enlistments in the United States Army, and later dedicated 25 years to protecting and serving as a member of the Detroit Police Department, and whereas Carl Eugene Morris shared 21 years of marriage with his beloved wife Angela, together raising a blended family and building a home rooted in love, faith, and unity. And whereas Carl Eugene Morris expressed his joy for life through his culinary gifts, his love of fishing, his passion for Detroit sports, and his ministry of music and preaching, uplifted and all who knew him with his human warmth and faith. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city of Romulus extend our deepest condolences to the family of Carl Eugene Morris and honor his memory as a devoted husband, father, grandfather, veteran, and public servant whose life of faith and joy touched many. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be presented to the family. And just, I was able to attend Mr. Morris's funeral. Ellen, you did a great job singing, and just, yeah, it was just a great celebration. I was glad I was able to attend and just be there to support, so if I can get a second on that.
Support.
There's been, excuse me, there's been motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, for memorial resolution. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
And the second one is for our pastor Edward Thomas Jr. He was a devoted husband, father, grandfather, spiritual leader, and public servant, born on September 1st, 1944, in Inxter, Michigan, and faithfully served both his community and his congregation through his life. Pastor Thomas was united in marriage to missionary Regina Curtis Thomas for 50 years together, raising a family and living a life rooted in faith, love, and service. Pastor Thomas made significant contributions to the city of Romulus through his dedicated service on the Police, Fire, and Safety Commission, the Board of Review, the Romulus Housing Commission, and the Property Dispensation Committee, as well as through his volunteer work in the school, and his roles as a licensed counselor, demonstrating his deep commitment to the well-being of his citizens. Pastor Thomas faithfully served as the pastor of the Cornerstone Tabernacle College Church for more than 35 years, guiding others with wisdom, compassion, and unwavering faith in God. Pastor Thomas's life was a true testament to faith, service, and love, marked by his devotion to family, his care for others, and his spiritual leadership that touched countless lives in Romulus and beyond. And on August 26th, 2025, Pastor Thomas completed his earthly journey and entered eternal rest, leaving behind a legacy of ministry, service, and love. And be it resolved that the honorable elected officials of the city of Romulus extend our deepest condolences to the family of Pastor Edward Thomas Jr. and honor his legacy of faith, leadership, and community service.
Support.
There's been motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Mr. Jones, for memorial resolution. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. With that, that concludes the chairperson's report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
I second that motion.
There's been motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you, city council. Number five is the mayor's report, and presenting the mayor's report this evening is our chief of staff, Ms. Julie Whitoco.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and good evening, city council. Welcome to our audience in attendance and also those listening at home. Before I go into the mayor's report, I would like to have our upcoming events shared with you from our own Vanessa Taliber out of the mayor's office.
Hello, I'm Vanessa Taliber, and here are some events happening in Romulus. The Romulus Goodfellas are accepting applications for assistance. Applications are available at City Hall or online. The annual City of Romulus St. John's Lodge, number 44, Horseshoe Tournament will take place at Elmer Johnson's Park this Saturday, September 13th, beginning at 12:00 PM. All are welcome to participate. The next one, Romulus Community Meeting hosted by Mayor Robert McCray, will take place Tuesday, September 16th, at Wick Elementary School, beginning at 6:00 PM. The 27th Annual Romulus DDA Pumpkin Festival is quickly approaching. The fun will begin on Friday, September 19th, when the festival officially opens at 4:00 PM with arts and crafts and vendor show, food, trucks, bingo, and more, leading up to the Romulus Road parade of lights, beginning at 8:00 PM. Following the parade, the pumpkin pub will be open to connect with friends, old and new, with live entertainment taking place until 10:30 PM. Saturday, September 20th, the festival will continue with a jam-packed day of events. The Romulus Fire Department IAF Local 4126 will get the morning started with pancake breakfast from 8:00 to 10:30 AM. Different events and activities for the day will include a car show, bounce houses sponsored by UAB, pumpkin painting, bingo, Punkies 5K Run, and Bike Ride, pumpkin chonkings. Live entertainment and pumpkin pub will all be open from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The fun doesn't stop there. On Sunday, September 21st, the day will begin with a non-denominational worship in the park at 10:00 AM. Activities for the day include pumpkin painting, hometown hero celebration, Romulus Got Talent competition, and new this year on Sunday only will be Zipline and Nerf Zone. For a complete calendar of events and information, go to Romulus DDA Pumpkin Festival Facebook page, the Community Connector newspaper, or the city website at romulusgov.com. If you know what it takes, show us your talent and shine on stage. Join the Romulus's Got Talent Show on September 21st. Prizes will be given to first, second, and third place winners. Send your audition tapes and videos to 313-408-3637. The Fall City YER sale will be open from September 25th through the 28th. You can register at the clerk's office or on our website. Are you Romulus residents in the grades of 9 through 12 interested in sharing ideas, learning about your local government and developing leadership skills? Apply now and join the mayor's youth council. Selective members will survey one-year term, meeting monthly from October 2025 through May 2026. Members will work alongside elected officials and city administrators to better understand local government and share ideas on issues that affect young people in the community. Applications are due by September 22nd. To learn more about this amazing opportunity and to apply, visit our website. Thanks, everyone, and remember to like and share us on Facebook or YouTube, or visit our website for more information. Happy Sunday, lovely evening.
Thank you, Vanessa. We certainly have a lot of things going on in this wonderful community, so looking forward to seeing everybody next weekend at the pumpkin festival, and on behalf of the mayor's office, we're really looking forward to working with our Romulus youth on this mayor's youth council. It's something we've talked about, and we're really looking forward to implementing that. So if you know any young folks in the community, encourage them to apply. I'll get into the mayor's action items this evening. Item 5A is the carbon reduction program for streetlight conversion, and the request with council's concurrence would be to authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the MDOT contract number 25-5425 to receive reimbursement in the amount of $339,911.16 for the Carbon Reduction Program Streetlight Conversion Project.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Tally?
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter to the attached Michigan Department of Transportation contract number 25-5425 to receive reimbursement in the amount of $339,911.16 for the Carbon Reduction Program Streetlight Conversion Project.
Support.
There's been motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, for the Carbon Reduction Program Streetlight Conversion Project. Any discussion?
I have a question. John?
Yes, Ms. Roscoe?
To the chair. So is this going to do like every streetlight in the city, or exactly, so we're going to be changing, and when might we start that, and how long would it take to, how long's the process? Let me have the expert, Julie Albert, come up here and answer that question. I appreciate that, thank you, Julie.
Hi, thank you for the question. It's about 1,200 streetlights that are going to be replaced across the city. The council likes to approve the expenditure back in April, so the equipment has been ordered, and it tentatively is on the DTE schedule to be installed in time for the Christmas holidays.
Okay, so it's every?
I don't know, it's two to four week installation time, as they get through the city, approximately that amount. This motion is, would just be for the reimbursement portion.
Okay, so when they get ready to do all that, it's going to fix all the lights that aren't working?
I sure hope so.
Because there's a few.
So that's actually a great, great time for me to say to you, if anyone has any streetlight outage, please let our office know. You can email us, leave a message after hours with an approximate location, and the reason I say to let us know is that we keep a file on each of the streetlights that are out. In the past, we've had an issue where it was a recurring problem, and because we knew about it, we could elevate it at DTE, so it really, we truly appreciate anybody that's calling, especially as unfortunately the days are getting shorter. Anybody that will call or email, let us know that there's an outage. Again, we appreciate it because we want to make sure these lights are working and operational.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Julie, are they adding streetlights as well in addition to repairing them? Are we adding?
No, right now, they're just replacing the bulbs that are in existence.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
John?
Yes, Mr. Wadsworth?
Julie, are we doing the physical work, or is TP or Edison doing the physical work?
DTE is doing it.
Okay.
It's DTE's equipment, and they will be installing the bulbs on their own.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from council? Roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Kraut?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, council. Mayor's item number 5B is an appointment to the Recreation Commission, and that's to fill a vacancy, and with your concurrence, that would be to appoint Autumn Archie to the Recreation Commission with a term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Tally?
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and approve the appointment of Autumn Archie to the Recreation Commission, with the terms to expire on December 31st, 2025.
Support.
There's been motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Mr. Jones, for appointment to the Recreation Commission. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes. Yes.
Is this the young lady we met out at the Coleman Center at movies in the night?
No.
This is, okay, I'm just not sure who she is. That's why I was asking.
Any other discussion? No discussion? Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council. Item five C is our Code RED contract, and with your concurrence, that would be to authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the three-year agreement with ONSAW for the Code RED Emergency Notification System.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Roscoe?
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached three-year agreement with ONSAW for the Code RED Emergency Notification System.
I second that motion.
The motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, and this for the Code RED contract. Any discussion?
I do.
Ms. Roscoe?
To the chair, I've mentioned this before, how important it is to go on the city's website, sign up for Code RED. It gives you, mind you, if you say email me, text me, call me, they're going to do all three, you know, and whether it's, you know, two in the morning or if it's, you know, ten in the morning, they're going to call your phone, text your phone, you know, leave you messages one way or the other. And it has to do with when we have city emergencies, weather emergencies, snow emergencies, you know, whatever's going on. But you have to go on the city's website, and you have to sign up for it to be able to get those alerts. And so I recommend it highly. As aggravating it can be with the phone going off at two in the morning, it's well worth it if we have an emergency situation.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
And if I may, just quickly on the Code RED system, if you don't have access, you know, to internet, you can actually even call our office. We can assist. It takes just a couple of minutes, and we can have you signed up. So don't let that be a deterrent. If you're not tech savvy, we can definitely assist you with that. So it's just imperative that folks get signed up for that. Okay, and then the last item on the mayor's report this evening, item five D, is a request to piggyback on the Sourcewell contract to purchase mobile column lifts from Steril Coney USA Incorporated. And with your concurrence, that would be to purchase one set of six one-hundred-and-one thousand pound capacity mobile column lifts from Steril Coney USA Inc. for a total cost of eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-six cents.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Roscoe?
I'll make that motion to concur with the administration and consent to the piggyback on the Sourcewell contract, number one-two-one-two-two-three dash S.K.I., to purchase one set of six one-hundred-and-one thousand pound capacity mobile column lifts from Steril Coney USA Incorporated for a total cost of eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-six cents.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Jones, to piggyback on Sourcewell contract to purchase mobile column lifts from Steril Coney. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is a quick question. I didn't get a chance to call down about this. What is this and what does it do?
I'll have Roberto come up and answer that, will you?
Okay.
Good evening, council. So these are mobile lifts for our mechanics, for the heavy equipment. So the fire trucks, assault trucks, all those heavy, you know, one of our assault trucks that weighs seventy thousand pounds. So it's those big heavier vehicles.
Okay.
They're kind of kept in an area at D.P.W., and when needed, they're brought out.
Okay.
And they have six anchor points around the vehicle, and they lift it up.
Wow, okay, no, thank you.
Thank you, Roberto.
Thanks, Roberto.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
And if I may, just quickly, and I could have done this under unfinished business, but council had a resident come forward at the last meeting with some concerns. I just wanted to give you a quick update and let you know that she's been working with various departments. I spoke to her on Friday, and this evening included the Airport Authority, because she had some questions on soundproofing, just based on where her property is located. So I'll give you a complete report once everything is finalized, but when I spoke to Ms. Miller on Friday morning, she was quite content that staff was reaching out and working with her. So a little bit of work to do, and I'll keep you updated on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that will conclude the mayor's report.
Thank you, Chief of Staff.
Number six is the clerk's report. I do not have any action items, but I do have one more event to add to our list to be missed, all the great things that's going on in the community. This Saturday, September thirteenth, is the Mental Health Fund Day. This is presented by the Michigan Legacy Credit Union. It's from twelve to four o'clock, and this is going to happen at our downtown historical park. And there will be yard and yard games, art, live music, raffles, vendors, face painting, relaxation zones, a lot of food trucks and things. So I think we have the horseshoe tournament going on, and then so we have the Mental Health Fair Fund Day that's happening right down here at our historical park. So there's a lot to choose from, so anyway, want to make sure that we announce that. And with that, that concludes the clerk's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Number seven, Treasurer's Report, which our city treasurer is not with us this evening, so there's no report there. It takes us to number eight, Public Comment. And this is a portion of the agenda for those of you who are in our audience and who would like to address our city council. To do so, you'll raise your hand, and after being acknowledged by our chairperson, approach the podium and state your name. The rules for this meeting can be found on the back of your agenda. And those who submitted a request to speak card will be called upon first. And then lastly, you will have three minutes to speak, and any additional time will be upon the consent of the chairperson. Mr. Chair and Counsel, I do have one written request, and that's from Ms. Stephanie Richards, and she's the community liaison from the Wayne County Sheriff's Office.
Hello, just wanted to come and bring our continued support. The sheriff, you know, just wanted me to let you guys know that he's doing anything and everything he can for Romulus. Anything, any ask that you have, please let us know. I had the pleasure of attending a Romulus One meeting. Really good, very active community, so that was interesting. I also have frequent, the Rib King has my heart. I'm there every weekend, and I'm eating barbecue there on Van Born and Middlebelt. I'm trying to stay away, but I can't. So I just want you to know, I believe in, you know, going to and patronizing the places I serve. So I did that. I went over to the historical park. It was a music event one day, and I went there. And it was cool talking to a lot of the different people in the community, and they were all telling me how much they love the city of Romulus and how much they love their city council and the mayor. And I just want to bring that sentiment back. I am actively looking for things to do. You just gave me a bunch. I wrote it down. I will definitely be at the Pumpkin Festival. And so I just wanted to come and say anything we can do to assist, please let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, council, that's the only written request.
Any other comments from the audience? Okay, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Coretta Goff, and I'm a resident of Romulus. And I'm a husband and a wife, Lynn. We are looking forward to starting a construction business, and what we wanted to find out is how do we get contracts from like for Romulus that we wanted to live on the job? Is there like sort of phone call?
Chief of Staff?
If I may, to the chair?
Yes.
So we have a purchasing department that you would submit to to get put on, basically we call a vendor list. So then when we have bids available, you would be notified of those bid opportunities.
Okay, so just make a phone call?
Yeah, and I'll give you my card before you leave, and I can help you with that. But yes, absolutely.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other comment from the audience? Yes, Jeff?
Hello, council, thank you. Just adding on to the pile of this weekend events, Team Brandon is having a cornhole tournament at Elmer Johnson Two this weekend, and that's Heather Mann's cherry that helps people with dealing with suicide. And so that's this weekend as well, and it's up from twelve o'clock on, and it's at Elmer Johnson Part Two this Saturday.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? If there's no other comments, Madam Clerk?
We'll close that part out.
Thank you.
All right. Takes us to number nine, unfinished business.
John?
Mr. Wildsworth?
If I can, and I bring this up every year, school's open, folks. School is open. So you folks on Barth or Beverly Road or Wick Road or down by Hill Creek, slow down when you're taking, when you're going to pick them kids up or drop them kids off, put down the coffee cup, the cigarette, the phone, driving like a bat out of, you know, slow down. Because once you hit somebody, you can't back up and take it back. So in the school zones, please, slow down. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wildsworth.
Is there any other unfinished business from council? Number ten, new business. Number eleven for approval is warrant twenty-five dash seventeen.
To the chair?
Ms. Abdo?
I'd like to make a motion. We pay warrant twenty-five dash seventeen in the following amounts. General fund, ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars, seventy-five cents. Major street fund, four thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars, four cents. Local street fund, fifty-seven thousand, two dollars and forty-six cents. Public safety fund, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars, fifty-five cents. Cable TV, twenty-four dollars. Mayorman Road Special Assessment, ten thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, one thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars, ninety-seven cents. Tax Increment Finance Authority, two million, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, fifty-eight cents. Downtown Development Authority, one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, sixty-one cents. Michigan Intention Defense Fund, three thousand, six hundred and five dollars, eighty cents. Library Fund, thirteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars, ninety-seven cents. Water and Sewer Fund, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, seventy-eight cents. Motor Vehicle, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars, fifty-three cents. Technology Services, two hundred and twenty-four dollars, eighty-nine cents. Retiree Insurance Benefit, one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars, sixty-nine cents. Revolving Funds, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Current Tax, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars, forty-seven cents. Impressed Payroll Fund, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, sixty-eight cents. Totalling all funds, two million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, seventy-seven cents.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mr. Crowe, to pay warrant number twenty-five dash seventeen for two million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote? Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Wildsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council. Number twelve is communication.
To the chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally?
So just a couple of things. We've talked about the stuff that's upcoming. I want to talk about some things that has happened. Our city is a very busy city of good things going on. First, Ms. Stephanie Richards, I do see you all over the place. You make me think you live here. So I thank you for coming and participating in our city at the different events. I've seen you in a lot of different places, so thank you for your engagement. Make sure you tell the sheriff. We appreciate that engagement. Thank you so much. And then the Community Baptist Church had their annual community event Saturday, last Saturday, I think, and it was big as usual, and they have just really branched out. I mean, it's just, it was just big, and it's always big, and they've been doing this for a lot of years. So I just want to shout out to Pastor McBurroughs and what they do over here at his church with this annual community event. I saw Councilman Crowe and his wife were there, Mark Willhite was there, Councilman Jones was there. So just want to shout out for them. They do this event every year, and it's just a great event. So shout out to the church and Pastor McBurroughs for all they do in the community. And then our school had a great event this past Saturday, Bratz Barbecue and Back to School. Very, very well-attended event. A lot going on, a lot of activity, a lot of parents and kids.